All right, let's all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What's the number for tonight's meeting? Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Discussion passes. All right, first item is workers' compensation and equipment breakdown insurance presentation.
Good evening, W B, good to see you for D X S Insurance as we were. Now then, thank you for having us. We have your workers' compensation renewal proposal and the equipment breakdown. All right, if you will flip to page 12, you can go through the premium options. The workers' compensation coverage is statutory for the state of Mississippi, so all the carriers are going to have the same coverage options available as far as coverage forms. So what we're looking at is obviously the pricing and the claim service that make the difference. If you don't mind, we'll start with the equipment breakdown real quick.
Sure.
You see the renewal option there at 50-40? That is the coverage that fills the gap in the commercial property policy of apparel, equipment breakdown, which could range from the explosion of air-conditioning systems, other bigger equipment systems, electrical arcing that doesn't result in a fire, those items are specifically excluded, and property policies where they're filled in profit in place over the years to cover those perils. This is the renewal option for it.
And it's a breakdown in case what happened?
It's a full word picture. If electrical arcing does not result in fire, we're going to come in and drive train systems, heat systems, inspection systems, and other electronics to all the other video, an actual explosion of large equipment possession, that's why it gives you a big air-conditioning system, if you have a boiler, something of that nature, and it just explodes on its own as a result of fire, and a result of fire is probably the fire peril. But without that, the damage to the equipment itself and the damage to resulting property around came from the explosion or the arcing.
And how long have we been covering this same type?
We've been covering it in place ever since we've had property policy, where the peril of some of that property covered it out.
Any question on that breakdown on that one?
The workers' compensation, you can see we've listed four options here across the top, and there are actually a couple others we didn't put in the top. Berkshire Hathaway, if you look down, the markets approach offer the quota of $300,000. Berkeley Insurance offered a quota of $323,000. Summit Bridgefield offered a quota of $250,000. So we put those in the top list of the options. The three that we put in there, one was Church Mutual, if you see that in the third column. The second is the MSBA, that is one of the self-insured funds, that would not be one of our recommendations. If you have guaranteed cost options available, we discussed in the past, and we have two of them here that are substantially less, but we'd just like to show you where the state competition is, what's the financial ability stand. And then the third option is the incumbent carrier, which is the RTW carrier, it's part of State Auto Insurance Company. You can see their pricing difference compared to Church Mutual, it's roughly about a $6,800 difference. After meeting with Amber and Jessica and their efforts in claims management and what's been done from RTW, it would be our recommendation to elect to stay with RTW for one more year. What you're getting from their services is closing of the claims and putting people back to work, which makes a difference substantially in the long haul of your insurance program. I have a few notes that we have members reviewed this report. In the last three years since you've been with RTW, you had a total of 90 claims in three years, and of those only six are still open. That's pretty good work. They're closing those claims, which means it's not impacting your experience mod really as badly. And we have proof as in the pudding, as we talked three years ago, when we made the decision as board to go to RTW to help with the claims management, it projected your experience mod is going to rise, it went to 1.21, went to 1.47, the past year 1.52, and that has shown in claims in the previous years of all those policy periods, and we knew it was coming because of the claim experience. This year the mod is going down to 1.41. So it started to come down, and that's a direct result of closing these claims. And the way that impacts your premium is your manual premium from the rates, and it will protect what you're just want you to understand, your manual premium from the rates applied to that experience mod. So if it's a one, they multiply your premium by one and it stays the same. For every point that is above one, your premium is increasing. Every point is below one, your premium is decreasing. And right now we're going from 1.52 to 1.41. And if we can have another good year with RTW, we had a little higher claims than we would like this year, but getting closed help, if we can limit the claims, stay on the same pace you're going to close, you're going to see that mod continue to go down, which is the long haul picture of going back to where these carriers that are plowing $280,000, $300,000, $350,000, they better give you their best quote with a better mod applied to the credits that they give to it and help you in the long haul.
Who determines that mod?
Yeah, it's the N C C I, it's the National Council of Compensation Insurance. Every, not almost every insurance company that lies workers' compensation in America has to comply, provide information to self-insured funds on that too, for main purposes, the standard carrier do, it's the claims that have been paid and your open claims count towards that. And the mod for this year skips the previous policy year, which is 17 to 18, that the claims are too new, they don't think they're developed enough to be accurate to report on, and it's the three policy years period to that, prior to that, excuse me, they take those claims and apply, give it to the N C C I, they calculate your mod, it's the same formula, hopefully, just make it as simple as possible, based on the actual rate studies from all insurance companies provided by the N C C I, and they take your amount payroll, they apply a factor to it, it says this is what your losses should be with this payroll, and you look at your actual losses, and a few other factors that go in, the simplest way to look at it, and what your losses should be based on actual rate studies on what they are. If those two numbers match up, you have a one, which is industry standard. If they're less than expected, you have a low one, if they're more than expected like that.
This is the third party that really does this, and everybody sees the same data.
Every insurance company has to provide information to them, and when the N C C I sends that mod sheet out, you don't get one every year, every insurance company has to apply, unless they're a self-insured fund and they don't apply with the N C C I, they don't have to.
One there too is, they see the self-insured funds are not insurance companies, they're governed by the work competition, but they're not, that's why they don't have to, they don't have to apply.
Some of them do though, they make a choice to do so, but they don't have to.
Got you.
Mr. Sebby selected the N C C I, there's about 28 states that use the N C C I as their governing standard.
That's right.
They have an office in West Palm Beach, Florida, I always frowned on that myself, I thought, well, that's a nice place to pick up an insurance office in Palm Beach, but I've never been there.
Right.
I have been, and they're just sitting there across numbers.
Well, RTW, if we continue, you know, because I'm real happy with what they've done, you know, will they continue to quote us though, or they will not, it's only three year?
No, it's not, it's not a definite timeframe, but their mod isn't taking account of they consider to be distressed, to have claims problems. And you get the claims closed quickly, you get people back to work, and you get that mod. And if the mod comes back down, these other carriers are going to step up, and they're going to be able to offer you pricing from RTW if you never offer.
So this is probably the last year that we don't get.
But the good thing he's come from it is, is now you have folks that manage your claims internally, have files on how to implement back-to-work programs, and work with understanding the process much better, because you make that transition to a different carrier, be much more prep internally, and then you can start utilizing our care, and so it does essentially the same thing, it's just one step removed, because that work, that our bullies and a bunch of insurance companies, they monitor, in a sense, now the RTW doesn't need, right, good, proof as in the pudding. When you move away from that, you're not going to be giving up 100% of that, because we do have a source, a resource that works for us, our people do that, it's just one step removed, so it's just not quite as close to action, quite good.
So your recommendation directly is RTW for both the workers' comp and equipment?
No, RTW is not the equipment breakdown carrier, Travelers Insurance Company.
So you got it. All right, so it is on this page underneath?
It's just the same for all.
It's for cause of the date. The comp, the comp is written on, equipment breakdown is the same carrier whether you take option one, option two, or option three.
Okay.
The options per carrier for the workers' comp, one option stipulated.
They'll be using, but that's all.
Finally, you say, why do you recommend RTW again, because when I'm comparing, I'm seeing 1.41 on modification on it, as well as on Church.
That's right.
So what?
RTW has been taking the claims, if you have, and they're closing them much quicker, meaning they're finalizing claims, they're getting the injury assessed, they have the home action, the health cares, they have their claim of action, they're getting the back to work, much quicker, closes that claim, produces the amount of medical bills, rehab, some medicine, loss wages, indemnity payment, workers' compensation, you sit out, you collect a certain portion of your loss wages, and that 1.41 mod, even though it showed up on all the carriers, they have to use that, and it's there because of the work that RTW has done in the claims management process. Before we were with RTW, the experience mod went from, it went as high as 1.51, but before that, experience mod was 0.92, 13 to 14, 0.98, 14 to 15, 0.21, 15 to 16, 0.47, 16 to 17, 0.52. Last year, that was some of the claims years before RTW was handling it. And now that they're handling the claims, I'm starting to go back this way, with these claims, your experience mod, and to have the benefit of this home service for one more year, the reduction in the mod would be doing the savings. If the claims are numbered, and you come out and have a hundred claims, I don't know so much they can do, working with our law control people, with Amber and Jessica, and claims manager, that's my recommendation, make the best of it.
If they won't be bidding next year, because they come into areas that they know they can come in and help straighten up.
That's right.
They'll make their money, they'll straighten you up, and then there's no reason for them to stay, because they're not making the money that it could make in other areas. These other insurance companies will now come in and compete, because you have a low level.
You've got your claims under control, and your claim directors are collecting credit to what they want to have.
Yeah, they're kind of a, you want them to come in and help clean up your workers' comp issues, and then they'll come in hitting in that league.
And also, it's good to be talking directly to Amber and Jessica, and their satisfaction with working with the case managers and nurses that handle the claims, they're very pleased with it, but that's part of our recommendation as well.
All right, with that being said, is there any more discussion? Can I get a motion to accept the recommendation of T R W, RTW?
Second.
And Travelers.
Travelers is only going to be a quick break.
Now, any discussion, now you can come in with some more discussion, because we really went further than we should have. Now that there's a motion on the table, now you can discuss.
I just, I just don't want to bowl anything that I haven't worked at. Not that I want to scrutinize everything, but I do like your recommendation, and especially with Amber and all of them having to work with this group. I mean, I can go with it because, and that's mainly the reason, because Amber. Because they gotta have people they can work with, so, you know.
Well, in their history of them, since we've had them, is a positive history. So that in itself helps me to support this particular recommendation, because I know next year we're going to be in a lot better shape. And then we will be able to see what they have worked hard to get us to, and we'll be able to see the benefits from that, probably next year.
If we have a good plan.
If, yeah, we don't have more, now, if we get claims, a lot of claims, then it can be, it may not be such a bad, good year next year, and they may come back and bid again.
And another thing that I really like is where we put this $5,000 in there, I know that's not much a month, but I guarantee you, I mean, an angle, but I guarantee you, there's somewhere and something, whatever, if something's ours, we got some claim, we can get it paid some way. I don't know where we're yet, but I guarantee you.
Well, he's our insurance, is there any other area?
It's included in the property policy, that's why we have it. It's excluded?
I'll be glad to sit down and review the points, but it must be because of property head.
Of what?
Because of Rowley.
Yeah. So this is just to cover those things that our insurance doesn't currently cover.
The main property policy, we don't have coverage, we put it back.
Does the equipment breakdown have coverage for the equipment? Not this, I'm talking about the actual equipment, the ball of art, the company that's.
It depends on what caused the damage. If it was because of fire, then you have will be covered.
The property policy.
Right, but if it's not because of an act of nature or whatever, then this is what, if I'm saying it correct.
This is not a waiver, terror policy, it's not a warranty policy, my piece of equipment that the manufacturers malfunction, that's not a breakdown that quick.
I'll give you a perfect example, we had one with the junior college company, the water pipes broke and damaged their computer room, computer system, it was like $100,000 covered. That's a water damage claim to the computer that caused the computers to malfunction, and that was paid under the water.
And that's not flush.
That's not flush.
This is a whole water machine policy.
I assure you, we don't have duplication coverage with that, and I'll be glad to sit down and go through the policies with you, work with the water.
Good? Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Discussion passes. Thank you all, sir. Yep. All right. We had Pat on the agenda for tonight, however, we're still working on the details of the contract.
If anybody, I have been working on them, I'll be honest with you, we've been going back and forth, and I wouldn't say I'm hard trained, but I could show you, I've been going through it, I've marked up a whole lot on this agreement, we're working back and forth on it, I just don't think it's quite ready yet. Deborah's kind of had me convicted a little bit last time about rushing and hurrying. In case anybody's worried, this is what one of these looks like, this is one of Wallace Carter did for the same thing, Wallace Carter did one for the city of Bucksie. So we've got some experience in them, they're no, they're no easy things, but we've got the contracts, we've been going back and forth, we're very close on them. If y'all would just give me another couple days, I'll send out what I, I'll send out what I think is the final version of the document, and y'all can ask questions about it now or later, whatever you want to do.
Do you feel like, when we have our October 3 meeting, that it will be in a final draft?
October 3 will be as good as I can get, you know, and I'll tell you, I've talked to some old lawyers that have worked on this, Jim Young and I are working on the bond issue, he's done a bunch of these, and he and I went through this, and he said this agreement that they're proposing, no offense, but 98 is that same as everybody's agreeing with their proposal, so it's not, we're not getting any, especially good, but we're not getting pretty bad, it's the same thing almost everybody does, so it's a kind of an industry kind of deal. But we're just still working on it, to be honest with you.
Deborah, I appreciate you staying on Jim, so that we do get all the fine points. That's good, that's where you do a very good job. Now, in the little bit that I've reviewed, they did incorporate the multiple options, I think they put in four options now, one being adding the air-conditioning. Keep in mind that every one of these options, we are not, just because we sign this contract does not mean that we're obligated to do that option. There's time periods that they're defining in there, that if we get to next January and we figure out that, oh wait, we can't afford this, because the new school's coming in higher than we anticipated, then we don't have to do that option.
Yeah, it happened, you know, two of them, you don't do, one's January 1st, one's April 1st. If you don't give them notice to proceed, that option just drops out of the contract, so you're not bound to do it. But, I mean, you gotta be timely about it, we gotta do our work, but they suggested that, not that that was a real good initiative.
Okay, that's good. And one other thing that I'd like to see on this, hopefully be completed maybe on October 3, if possible, is the finance side of this, so that when we come in and we, we approve this contract, we're ready to go.
That's what I want to talk to Jim Young about, because I've talked to those guys, and they said they would help us, but I mean, it's not necessarily their forte.
Right.
That's what this is, this is a financing document, what it is, they've got connections with Bank of America, and Bank of America is as competitive as anybody on these things, they come with good rates, so, you know, been talking to them, but I mean, this deal with the Hank High Bank, Hank High Bank, and they do it, so it's just a question of where you get the best rates, it's kind of depends somewhat on the deal you do, you know, I mean, if you, the amount of the project you commit to do will help you a little better in your rate. If you commit to only do phase one, and you have these other phases out there, your rate may not stay as good as if you'd commit to, say, phase one and two, you may, you may get a better rate committed. That's not saying you're a bad rate, but I mean, it's just a question of what we do, but we'll be working on that too. You'll have time to put that together.
Yeah, and just get them from, like you were saying, from others, if they don't go with it, then somebody else.
Bank of America, I mean, it's a lease purchase, I agree.
Would it be reasonable to think we could also have this by October 3?
I doubt you could have that put together, but once you get this deal in place, then it won't be hard, just a few weeks to go get a final, get some quotes, because then you got a, a firm, the next one will want to see the deal, the equipment, everything you're doing, so they can quote you financially.
Is that your experience?
I would, you could probably work them both at the same time if you wanted to, like the Bank of America, we gave them a range, and that's how they quoted it, I would assume if you want to get their quotes, they can do the same, so.
What I want to shoot for is the third on the contract, and have everything else ready for the ninth, so that we can, we can have the financing in place, the 11th, because we moved to the 11th. So we have the financing in place for that next meeting.
Okay.
And then we will have, that way we'll have this.
Well, we can't vote on the contract, I don't understand what you're saying now, you're going to vote on the contract?
No, we're voting on the contract October 3, okay? So that's, that's next week.
And then October 11.
Depending on if it passes on October 3, then I want the financing in place, ready to go for October 9. If it doesn't pass on October 3rd, then it's irrelevant.
October 11.
Yes.
October 11.
Okay, I got you.
The one thing that I want everybody to keep in mind, we do have a decent fund balance, okay? If we have issues with air-conditioning and things, those can be done, we don't have to pay interest on top of them if we can afford them in-house. Those are small enough projects that we can afford to fund those in. Now, it's on there as an option, it's going to be up to y'all if y'all want to put it in. To me, I run air-conditioned to feather, and then I replace it.
For sure.
Because it shows over longevity, you never get your return on your investment, if you take one out that's working, and replace it with a more efficient one. But that, that way, if we got these ones that are getting close to.
They just need to be considered, no, you don't want to.
Right.
They need to be considered and make sure that they have a life-year rating and all this stuff, to ensure that we still get good.
And I think that's something we can handle with our own expertise, but that'd be something y'all can all decide, once you look at the, the new option that was put in for an air-condition, you can make that decision, we can discuss that on October 3, because I think that's one of the ones we have to make the decision on by November 9.
November 1.
November 1, so we'll look at that, we'll see if it's something we want to try to do in-house, or if it's something we want to finance for 20 years to get done, the air-condition part of it. Replacing air, if you hadn't seen the, okay, well, they've added a section, another option, which includes the air-conditioning. So, and another thing, I've talked to Officer Louis Elias, to have him evaluate if he thought what we were doing for security purposes was in line with what they were thinking. Now, I was hoping he may be here tonight, but the preliminary is we're right on track with what they would recommend us doing. There again, that's something we don't have to make our decision, that one I think's next year. So we still got a time to tweak that.
We don't have $4 million, so I don't say it, not really trying to build a new school team.
Yeah, well, that's.
What the power overrun is going to be, that's my biggest fear and my biggest concern.
Yeah. Well, that'd be the kind of stuff that we need to discuss on October 3 before we approve the contract. All right, hated joke came down, and it wasn't quite ready, but like Jim said, we kind of like a completed contract before we vote.
Got it.
Hopefully we'll have one by the 3rd, and hopefully by the 11th, we'll have a financial instrument in place in order to find it.
Do you want us to speak to the AC, the HVAC units at all, instead of your?
Have you seen, has, has anybody?
I don't know that you have.
I know Jim had these, I've got it in the agreement, the agreement where it puts it in there, but I hadn't looked at specs right then.
If y'all could, if you could, real quick, I'll just, if you don't mind, I'll just, I'll.
So we look back at it, we looked at HVAC, Deborah, just go from the, from the very get-go, we looked at HVAC as an option. The problem with HVAC is they do not pay back, like an LED light does, obviously, it's a much, much longer payback. You have a very, very good inventory on HVAC to a district. On average, you have an eight-and-a-half-year life, which is, again, really good for the district. So you have 18 units that are deemed to be problem areas, okay? To replace those, we've got a quote and installation to replace those, it runs about $350,000. They're large units, I mean, it's pretty easy to do in Appleland, a lot of them are the gyms, things of that nature. Now, are they all going to go out tomorrow? No, they're not all going to go out tomorrow. That would be deemed to be the problem areas, ones you probably have to tackle sooner rather than later. There's an additional, a total of 58 units that are aged, deemed to be aged, but again, those may have three, four, five, I mean, additional four on top of the 18. So they may have five years of life left, and to go and replace those units that are running decently well today, even though they're aged, we would, I just would not recommend it. Our ultimate goal is trying to create a program that use, create the maximum amount of efficiency as possible, and try to tackle at least the needs and desires that we call, or were told that were most pressing for the board, which are things like the windows and doors at Coral and Reeves, and then the vulnerability stuff that came up later. So that's just real, just real quick, you know, overview of the HVAC situation.
Yeah, I definitely want it, you know, changed right now, I'm just wanting to, you know, talk about it and have it, you know, being considered.
Yes, ma'am.
Because that's the biggest uses of energy.
The three, the 18 units, we, that is the fourth proposal in there, the three, the one is the energy efficiency project standalone, the second part of it was how to not, and the windows and doors, the third was doing the vulnerability. There's a fourth one in there that we put in there at your, at your request, after the conversation we had last time, that addressed at least the major problem, not major, but the most likely problem areas are HVAC in the district. And we, again, we inventoried the entire HVAC system, it just deemed that, it just was not the best bang for your buck, because you have a pretty good inventory in the district.
And the good thing about the study that they did on that, that's something we can use in our budget here, when we start to work the budget, say, maybe we want to, we're having a lot of maintenance on this one unit, and it's costing us more than it's worth, then we can add that into our next year's budget, or those kind of things that we can go ahead and plan to do.
Well, we may have to monitor it.
Yes, that's it.
Because your power bill, I guarantee.
Oh, that's right, it'll show, it'll show.
That's all I'm saying, we're going to take that into consideration, I don't care what, you can put 100 ones into a building, and if that HVAC is not energy efficient, the rice-year rating, then you're going to lose hundreds, you're not gaining anything. That's the only thing I was saying about that, I don't want any of the change, but they do have to be considered.
Right.
Even if they were new, they would have to be considered.
Well, thank you, Deborah. All right, so there's no action needed on that, and we'll get back on the third to discuss the contract.
Thank you.
And if you would, I think we have the copy of what they, on the ACs, we could share it with the board, just so we'll have that information.
I don't.
I got it, I saw it in the contract, so.
Well, I'll forward you.
All right, if you would, that'd be great. All right, if you would, that'd be great. Thank you all. All right. So, that completes those items, the next one is the architect presentations and interviews. I'm not sure, do we want to do this in an open environment, or is this something?
Let me, let me have, I've been through this three or four times. Architect's presentations to you are not an appropriate executive session, either, they're just not. We went through this with the state court, what we did with the state court was, we, we told all the professionals, look, we can't go into executive session, but we really don't want to advantage one over another, and we asked the presenters to each extend to each other the courtesy of, if you're presenting, you be in here, if you're not, how about step out and give them their chance, and, and it worked with state court, but if somebody says, no, we're not leaving, they don't have to, it's okay, it's open.
And that's the point I was trying to make, some of that information may be given, may be proprietary to their company, and they don't want the other people.
Well, I mean, if you got, if you got five presenters, and one, number five gets to listen, then number one through four.
Right.
I mean, you know, it's a natural advantage, so it's just a courtesy, they might extend to each other.
Oh, yeah, we, we definitely probably will turn the camera off here at ease, so that they're not.
You don't, I mean, you, you can't expect somebody not to watch.
Right.
That advantage, it's just a courtesy.
So, we will, if you would, when we get to that part, we'll go ahead and cut the. All right, with that being said.